Okay, now 7:30, we'll call the Thursday, November 14th, 2013 Planning Board Meeting into order. Need a motion to accept the agenda?
So moved.
Wait a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
First item on the agenda is a continuation of the public hearing, scenic road, public hearing for 305 Country Way. Setting up, I will indicate that since our last meeting, all of the emails and letters that have been sent through the planning board or to members of the planning board or from the planning board have been logged in. Right? We have a letter from the planning board to Morse Engineering with response to John Chesia about waivers. We got an email from Lance Van Letten to Laura Harbottle with response on 10-31. An email from Alisa Bartoli to Laura Harbottle. Revised landscape memorandum from Karen Joseph to Laura Harbottle. Comment on the 305 CWFOSD by Crusell and Van Letten's. John Chesia supplemental engineering review number five and summary of issues. Version two of the 305 CWFOSD by Crusell and Van Letten. Email from John Chesia to Morse Engineering in the town. And finally, on 11-14, an email from Vince Van Letten to Laura Harbottle. Give you updated correspondence. All of that's public and available if you want to see it. That way, you're up. Why don't you talk about what you've done since we've last met? 305?
Sure. Since we last met, we submitted to the board a revised set of plans on October 29th. That submit will revise the plans according to John Chesia's comments and the comments that we had received from the board previously. Majority of those changes were in the calculations and not substantial plan changes. The plan changes themselves were relatively minor. Again, most of the calculation, it was mostly the calculations that changed. We did add a little bit more detail to the plan. We revised some grading along the edge of the right-of-way. In particular, around Station 1 plus 25, we had originally proposed a four-to-one side slope that put us working right up against the 150-foot no-disturb buffer. We have since revised that to provide a two-foot shoulder along the edge of the pavement and then a three-to-one grading in that location. So it pulls it a little bit further away from the 150-foot buffer. The basin, we worked on providing the bottom of the basin. We had been modeling the detention basin more as a bowl-shaped. Now what we've done is we haven't taken any credit for bottom surface area. That's reflected in the calculations with respect to the bottom elevations we're showing. We provided a revised temporary sediment basin that's included. The temporary sediment basin approximately in this location on Lot 3 that would be constructed during the roadway construction while the permanent basin is establishing itself and vegetating. We provided some additional calculations on the sizing for that system. We relocated the infiltration for the roof on Lot 3. But that really is the summary of the changes to the plan set that was before you. We also submitted, as requested at the last meeting, a set of landscape architecture plans. Those went through review with Karen Joseph. We made revisions to the landscape plan. The landscape plan has submitted specified street trees along the edge of the trees. It specified seating mixes.
Excuse me, that's on the 11-4 revision or is it on the October, the original?
The 10-29 is the latest date.
Okay.
It specified the tree plantings up near the entrance to the site as well. We've also inquired with the neighbor immediately to the south of the site regarding obtaining an easement, again, in regards to a site distance that we had brought up at the intersection of our street and Country Way. As you recall, what we were showing on the plan and profile page, the site distance per the speed limit on Country Way requires a 200-foot site distance which is accomplished. However, on a major thoroughfare like that, what we do is we look at the 85th percentile speed and a lot of people's speed along Country Way. The traffic is more along 40 miles an hour. And so at 40 miles an hour, a distance of 305 feet is required. That requires a little bit of distance over the neighbor's property. There were no trees or obstructions there currently. So with or without the easement today, we could comply with that 305-foot distance. We're proposing the easement to, you know, create a permanent requirement there, that that be maintained. Within our control, we provide 277 feet of site distance. The posted speed limit, again, only requires 200. Speed limit that people are traveling requires 305. We have not gotten a definitive yes or no on that easement. If we get a no on the easement, I think we're going to propose providing some sort of additional signage, intersection ahead, another speed limit sign, something along those measures.
Okay, all set?
Yep.
So I guess, John, do you want to talk to your summary?
Sure. I think that the only, well, let me just go through, you know, obviously the letter because I continually add to it, gets very involved, so that's why I'm excited.
Your summary was greatly appreciated.
It actually melts me too because I get to have a couple of pages. But I do think for the record, it's convenient to have the whole thing, so you know what happened. But anyway.
But it's 55 pages or more.
Yeah. Well, the regs alone require a certain number of pages. We have a comment added, but anyway. So, as a summary, part of the issues for this project that the board has to determine relative because of the flexible open space development, and I highlighted some of those issues, this alteration of views on Country Way, the value of open space, the proposed topographic changes as part of the things you look at, the design relative to low impact design techniques, the shape and size and frontage on the lots and all those things, those are things the board's supposed to look at and determine that this is a better plan. The landscape plan, I understand, is being reviewed by staff, you have a landscape architect on staff, which is convenient. The soil testing regulations require that it be done by an agent of the board that you specify, which I don't know that you've done that. They had it tested and did not run it through the board, from what I understand. So you can either require additional testing, you can accept the testing as it is, you can require confirmatory stuff when they dig it under construction. There's a lot of things, but I think the board needs to come to a decision on that. The temporary sediment basin design is, I think it's going to be plenty big enough, but the calculations presented didn't demonstrate that. There were some errors in the calculations. That's something that you can either require, I mean, I think you should require it to get updated to be correct, but I think that they probably can make it work. If you look at the size of the temporary basin, it's probably as big as the permanent basin. The difference is the way you size them is they actually hold the entire two-year storm blocking and then they allow outflow during a ten, as long as there's no increase off the site in the ten year storm. So they do allow outflow in the ten, or the regulations allow that. So that does, you know, that generally makes them a little bit smaller. I had a question that didn't, it was responded to like it was addressed, but I didn't see it on the plan. The, and that's regarding the direction of the flow of water into the permanent basin along the south side where the basin starts, the grading. They need to do something to identify the grading to be consistent with the watershed divide plan or change the watershed divide. I think it'd be easier to do as well. One change that was made to the plan that Greg did not discuss was that the head walls in the original design, where the pipe comes out, it should not be on a slope. It needs to be flat so that the water comes out, it diffuses the energy and doesn't, you know, spreads it out, prevents erosion, prevents all that stuff. If you put it on the edge of a slope like this, I don't care how much stone you put, it's still going to wash out on the stump. So what they did is they increased the size of the head walls and dropped the grading so that, you know, it could work, but the detail for the head wall is not consistent with the plan. So there's a little bit of detail work that needs to just catch up with itself on that. The other one is, and I don't think this is a big thing to change, but the storm sewer, maybe I should go into the plan and find out. No, this storm sewer here.
On Lot 3.
Is real close to the easement, is real close to the easement here, and it's like basically about five feet from the no-disturb area here. I think the addition of one-man hole would allow them to adjust that pipe, so it's more centered in the easement, it's off the slope, and generally you put them in the middle of an easement. And then somebody's going to have to potentially dig it up at some time, and it just makes sense to, you know, for one-man hole to adjust the location so that it's centered or as near centered as possible and avoid the storm where especially next to the no-disturb buffer and giving up room. I think one-man hole, a little bit of tweaking of the layout would solve that whole problem for minimal effort. Site distance was discussed, and I think ideally an easement would probably be the best way to go if they can get it, and if they can't, they'll have to determine whether or not additional signage or whatever that could. Another question I think the board may want to look at is that the roadway layout has sort of a circle plus an extension to the south side, which it doesn't, I don't understand what purpose of that is. It doesn't go to anything. It is, it's a lot. It's not like, there's a requirement in the regs that if you buy a larger parcel, you don't want, you want to create loop roads, maybe you don't, but I mean, generally speaking, the goal of planning is to not have a lot of dead ends from a safety perspective. So most of the older regulations said you extend the road into other properties so you don't create a dead end here and a dead end here, just like that. But in this case, what the extension is, I think it goes to a single family lot that wouldn't really be further developable at that location anyway. So you may want to just look at that out, you know, the purpose of it, it does anything. And finally, you know, you should look at the waivers relative to the public benefit of said waivers relative to the, because that's the regulation. It has to be for the benefit, public benefit for the waiver. And there's several of them, but, and I think there's a couple of spots where, like the additional ones, in some cases, they would be an overlap of a regulation, in other cases, they might just not have been picked up.
Do you want to comment any, Alisa, Greg?
Real quickly, the soil testing one. I did have correspondence with Laura that it was acceptable to use Ralph Cole as the witness for all of the soil testing on the site.
I don't know that we ever completely resolved that. I don't remember if we talked about that, Bill, or...
I remember a discussion about Ralph, because I remember saying that I had no problem at all with Ralph doing work.
Okay, we can maybe make sure that gets in the minutes or somehow.
Okay. You verify what the conversation was?
Yeah.
So all the soil testing was witnessed by that after I had that discussion. The flow of water, you know, John said we can add a swale on Lot 3. We just had a general grade arrow that said grade to basin. We can certainly add some spot shots or a swale to that effect. Centering the pipe in the easement, I can look at that again. You know, the pipe is five feet inside the easement line. I didn't see that being an issue to dig up. If you had to dig it up anyways, it's all privately owned, privately maintained. But I can certainly look at trying to center it a little more or even reconfiguring the easement in that location to provide a little more than five feet if we think it's necessary. The rest of it, you know, we did run some new calculations on the erosion or on the sediment basin. I'll give John those, I just ran those today, but I think it is adequately sized.
And the head wall detail?
The head wall detail, we're going to extend the wing walls of the head wall out just a little further than the detail calls for, and I will update that detail as well. I also should recognize, we did get comments just this afternoon from the engineering division. They've weighed in on the project. There were, again, a couple of detailed revisions that they want, nothing that's really going to substantially change the design or the layout of the plan, but adding some specific details on the type of catch basin hood that they want versus what has been reviewed thus far. And again, a couple of indications on the water main and the service connections, you know, changes to the plan, nothing substantial, but detailed changes at this point. Just received those this afternoon.
So that would bring you basically input from the DPW and the Water Department?
Yes. We had met with the Water Department previously regarding the water main layout and the engineering department. I have to check between them because there appears to be a little bit of difference of opinion.
And what about the extension to the east, the offset from?
Extension, yep. It's most easily seen on the lot layout plan. The extension really, it's provided to accomplish a couple of things. One, you know, we're providing a turnaround down here that's a T-shaped turnaround, and by providing a driveway off of that, it just allows that much more room for fire apparatus or any, you know, you see the pavement here extending over, you know, to the edge of the right-of-way at that location. It doesn't extend all the way out in the extension, but it extends right up to the edge of the circular portion. It allows for any future utility connections to abutting properties if necessary. It also clarifies an issue that has come up, and that is with respect to the side yard setback on Lot 2. The question has been brought up on whether or not this line here is a side yard or a rear yard setback. In this scenario, with the lot layout like this, it is clearly a side yard setback. We have that verification from the building inspector. We would maintain the rear yard setback, you know, from the line that's directly opposite, you know, in the furthest point back on the lot in this scenario.
It's not a bisque, but a frabisk, won't it?
No. There are other right-of-ways that have been approved with extensions like that that don't necessarily tie into larger pieces. Kobe's Run in particular, I believe, has that, as does the Norby Farms subdivision.
And I guess the last question I got is, your waivers, your requested waivers are all up to date?
I believe that they are.
Laura, comment?
I think the comments that John made are really important and need to be addressed. The first comment includes a number of different items. The alteration of the views from Country Way, I don't think there's much that can be done about that unfortunately, but there is going to be some effort going into revegetating the open space. The low-impact design is one of the items that should be addressed in the flexible open space development plan. I think it really hasn't been addressed particularly in this development, but it's something, you know, the board has asked for. You could continue to ask for it, you know, before closing things out, or maybe it's something that really can't be done on this site. Most of the other items, I think, John went over pretty thoroughly. I think the main thing that the board needs to do, you know, in beginning to kind of pull things together with this, you know, with this process, are to think about whether the benefits are really sufficient for the flexible open space, for the conventional plan to be better than the ordinary conventional plan. And the open space is a little bit more than the minimum that's required. It's a lot more when you think of the wetland, but the wetland really can't be developed anyway. I mean, I think the important part is the upland. It's about a half acre more than the minimum that they have to provide, and a half acre doesn't sound like much, but in this part of town, it's basically a buildable lot. So, you know, I think that that could be considered meaningful in terms of some additional public benefit that the town, you know, that the town gets from this. As far as other benefits, one of the things that was talked about was improving the water quality from the drainage in the drainage ditch that goes towards the tributary. And I did talk with DPW about putting in a catch basin as something, you know, the applicant might be willing to do to, you know, to get this development, you know, put together. That would be about a $6,000 cost to do that. So if you're looking for other public benefits, that's another, you know, other possible public benefit. One of the things that Karen and I spent a lot of time working on was what type of fence made sense to divide the open space from the rest of the development. A lot of different things have been talked about. The applicant talked about having a, I think the plan called for having like a PVC split rail, you know, like a white split rail kind of a thing. And, you know, it didn't really seem to either of us like it would provide a meaningful separation. It seemed like you needed something a little more solid than that. When John Clarkson was here, he was talking about a stone wall. Well, you know, unless you make it really high, it might be something that would just be kind of fun for kids to climb over, although it would look, you know, it would look kind of impressive and it might, you know, might have the right effect. So we looked around a lot of different fence and one of the things that we were considering also was the appearance of the thing. You could do like a black chain link. It would tend to kind of disappear, but it would still be chain link. It would be fairly expensive. That might not be the right choice. So there was a type of fence with like a wood post with like a wire mesh in between. It had kind of, kind of like a rural look to it. You know, not an unpleasant look, not a really strong look like a chain link would have, and that looked like it would be something that would be pretty attractive. It would do the job as far as kind of keeping people out of that area, and it wouldn't be expensive to maintain or to install. Couple of other issues with the open space. On the landscape plan, the applicant was proposing to put in some crab apple trees in it, which, you know, might look very pleasing, but it also might kind of make it a little more inviting to people by making it like really charming and pretty and all that kind of stuff. So, you know, just personally, I think that maybe just regular native species like cedar or oak or something that you find around the neighborhood naturally might be a good choice for plantings as opposed to something to really kind of, you know, beautify it and make it look like something someone would want to walk through or whatever. Another aspect to the open space is that the Conservation Commission is now wanting the applicants on these plans to provide a draft conservation restriction. I think there are a lot of them out there. You could get one, you could probably get one from them and just change some wording in it. Maybe they even have like a word document for it. Another thing that came up on the open space, which I think Karen mentioned in her landscape plan, was the importance of making sure that whatever planting goes on there is done by hand, that the plants are wheeled in by hand and they're dug by hand. You don't want, you know, some front-end loader going over that property with, you know, with a bunch of trees and depositing them or something like that. You really need to keep trees out of that, you know, machinery out of that area. I did discuss with Neil Duggan whether planting trees would be considered disturbing that area or, you know, the revegetation also, and his interpretation of the zoning bylaw is that he feels it's within the spirit of the bylaw in some sense to allow planting in that area. That was, you know, that was his decision. I think particularly if it's intended to revegetate and protect the area, that it wouldn't be counter to the basic spirit of the bylaw. So that's about where we are with the open space. You know, other than that, I know there is some discussion going on about the easement, and I think that may take a little bit of time to resolve. One other thing that's important is that there has been a request for determination of applicability filed with the Conservation Commission to further investigate some of the natural resources. For instance, I believe the, I have not read it, but I did hear from the Conservation Agent that it had to do with defining the edge of the tributary, and I think there were some other questions about some of the other resources and whether they'd been correctly identified. They would be trying to, I think that they have to make a decision within 21 days. So their decision is going to be on November 25th. That's, you know, well before, you know, whatever planning board meeting would have to happen, you know, well, I mean, I think ideally, it might have been on some people's minds to try to finish this process up tonight. I think that does throw a little bit of a wrench into the works, but at the same time, there are a number of other issues that are open. So when Bill and I were talking about what to do with the meeting tonight, what we talked about was trying to go over some of the conditions and also, of course, the findings of fact and see if we can get some, you know, consensus about which of those make sense and which don't. I mean, that's really up to the board whether you feel like, you know, going to that length or not, or whether there are other questions you need to answer beforehand, so.
Okay. Did you want to talk about the planning and the fence?
Sure. I mean, we're certainly open to suggestions. We took our stab at putting together a landscape plan. We had a registered landscape architect do it. Now, if you wanted to swap out the crab apple trees for something else, the plants that we have in the 100-foot buffer zone, I think we'd be amenable to that. As far as the fence, we did provide, what we proposed is we proposed a PVC split rail fence. PVC being low maintenance, we thought it would have a decent aesthetic value with this. You know, and the fence itself is three feet in height. I mean, I haven't seen the fence that Laura's speaking of, the wooden posts and mesh one. Aesthetically, I don't know how it looks. I can't speak very highly of a chain link fence at this location if we're talking about Again, I think we're open to any suggestions the board has at this point for that, but the split rail fence, I think, is in keeping with some of the other fences in the neighborhood. It's keeping in character with the town. You see them all over the place. It's not a fence that will have gates in it. We're not proposing landscape areas beyond natural plantings on the other side of the fence, and it's separated from the lots by a roadway. It's not, it's not a landscape fence that's along someone's buffer at the back of their limit of clearing behind their house. It's across the street from their house. It's across the street from their yard. So it's...
Their front yard.
From their front yard. So it is a little bit different than having a buffer in the back of a house, maybe that someone would be approaching on a little bit. We're certainly open to discuss it with the board.
The purpose of the fence is to keep the people who live in the three houses from climbing over into the non-disturbed area?
Dumping clippings and leaves.
Well, it's to keep anybody.
All kinds of stuff.
Any thoughts on the board about the fence?
I'd go on record that I think chain link would not be a...
I'd go on record that I think chain link would not be aesthetically pleasing. I would try to do anything but that. So I don't know specifically. I'm very strong against chain. But anyway, I don't know specifically with the one you mentioned with the wood posts.
I sent a link to it. I don't know if people were able to get that to open up.
Yeah, I saw. I mean, it looked good because it was well landscaped in front of it, I think. If it were standalone by itself, I would say no. I would still be more inclined to, if we're talking about three feet, I'd still be more inclined to think about something that's like a stone wall as opposed to a split rail fence.
That's a high stone wall. I don't usually get.
Two and a half was the difference between two and a half and three.
No, no, I know. I know. I'm just thinking the base, it's going to have to taper. It's going to take up a lot of ground space.
Kind of like a retaining wall.
Right. They shift with frost heaves and things like that. I don't know. I mean, I think you're right aesthetically.
It becomes a much more definitive barrier.
Right. And your garden cart isn't going to roll over it.
So what's the minimum height the stone wall would have to have to be effective? You know, realizing that at some point, anybody can climb over any wall with a ladder, but just to have it be, you know, there and to sort of a monument almost that marks the marks the.
The ones that are on my property are probably a couple of feet. A couple of areas might be three feet. That's a pretty hefty stone wall.
So maybe two feet might be enough to make it work?
You'd be able to climb over it at two feet, there's no question. But I don't think you'd be able to roll a garden cart over it and dump your leaves on the other side.
Right.
I don't know. I think a three-foot stone wall is an overkill for what we're trying to do.
Yeah. It's pretty hefty.
I'll sell for two and a half.
Do I hear two feet eight?
That's my feeling. I let the board figure out what the pleasure is on it, but I think stone wall is aesthetically be very pleasing, but it's an overkill for what we're trying to do.
What's the linear extent of fencing that we're talking about? Is it going to be continuous, the whole length of the property or the developed area of the property?
The fence starting right here.
Yeah.
Then extending all the way down right here.
Eight hundred feet.
So that is a total.
A bunch of fence.
Approximately 280 feet.
I think that's another place where, you know, from the office review standpoint, we thought that it really should be continuous all the way down, at least to the end of, is it left three?
I would agree with that. I think the purpose is, unfortunately, or fortunately, or whatever, is you're trying to build right up against a no disturb zone. And the real purpose is to preserve that. It's not really just aesthetics, so.
Oh, no. Certainly if that weren't the situation, it wouldn't have been proposed at all. So aesthetics doesn't have really anything to do with it. But it needs to be something that looks halfway decent.
Yeah, I agree with that.
Was the board thinking about, you know, like a stone wall, like a old stone wall type thing or something that would be with pavers? I mean, there's so many different.
No.
I think a farmer's wall. Yeah, farmer's wall, loose laid. Still quite an undertaking to do 300 or 400 feet of that.
I was going to say, at three feet, that's quite a bit.
Or even at two.
What's the linear cost per foot? Does anybody know?
I don't.
What's that?
I was just wondering what the linear cost per foot would be.
I don't know.
It would depend, I think, on how, if you had to bring in the stone or if it were available out of the.
Out of the area?
Out of the area site excavations, for one thing.
Last I heard, it was actually cheaper to bring in stone than to harvest the local stone that was already there.
Really? Wouldn't surprise me.
Now, this is just a question. Would it be, since the stone wall is not permeable in the sense that you can't see behind it, would it be easier to dump grass clippings and things? I would think maybe the split rail fence or something that's visually kind of open or transparent, you could see that if someone, you know, actually were to dump something.
The split rails I've seen after a few years, some of the rails disappear.
I know.
But.
Where are we?
We need a catalog. We need, yeah.
I guess the.
Wallpole Woodworkers or somebody's catalog.
The other question that maybe you can answer is whether putting a stone wall there affects the drainage.
At that location, it really wouldn't because it's at the, it's going to be along the toe of the slope, really. You know, putting a stone wall there, we're not, we're talking about a dry-laid wall for the most part.
Right.
Wouldn't expect it to.
I'm sorry.
Joe has a question. Joe Hayes?
Oh, Mike.
Michael. I'm sorry, Michael. What am I saying?
Okay.
The brother thing.
Just going to mention that the last couple of times I've been involved in conservation issues where the conservation commission wanted to keep separate and fenced off, they've gone for split rail with small, adequately spaced wooden signs of, you know, conservation area, no trespassing, no dumping, those types of things. I just bring that to your attention. It's what they've, what they ever asked for in a couple of the projects I've done in the last few years.
Let me just put it back on the applicant. You hear what we're thinking in terms of what they're looking to do. We're not going to wrap it up tonight, but I would ask that you would come back with a proposal that would meet the requirements in terms of, one, is protected, make it visually pleasing, and the same time effective.
I would think your landscape architect would have some suggestions along those lines.
With an ink barrier or whatever in front of it.
Didn't really see the fence.
And you've got the link for the wallpole woodworkers that was in the memo?
I don't, no.
You do now.
Want to see it?
Those granite pillars?
They look like granite, but I don't think they're wood.
They're almost like round railroad ties or something.
There's poison ivy there in the bush.
We'd solve that with a couple of goats. One of the things we talked about was the CR. I guess, Michael, you had prepared a CR?
A conservation restriction?
I would be happy to get that to Laura next week.
And then let me revisit the easement. You're in the process of seeing whether an easement is a possibility?
Correct.
And we talked about a basin as a public benefit. I don't know whether you've had a chance to look at that or think about that.
First.
I wasn't aware that Laura and DPW had spoken about that. I guess what's the location? What type of basin? What are we talking about?
It would be on Countryway where that stormwater is being collected. It's, I mean, it's collected in some kind of a catch basin here now.
Yeah, there's, what it is, is there's several catch basins on Countryway. So it's a whole drainage system that's feeding a discharge pipe up at the intersection of Williamsburg and Countryway. So it wouldn't just be, one catch basin is only going to service a small area. It's actually accepting flows from probably the intersection of Countryway and First Parish Road. All those catch basins are coming down through this.
Are they coming to a single discharge location?
They're coming to a single head wall that is what feeds this tributary.
Is that where they were talking about a basin of some kind?
They were talking about a deep some catch basin, so there would be some.
At that location?
Yeah, at that location. You know, I don't know offhand about the number. I mean, this would be a start. It might not do the whole job. The DPW might have to, you know, do some of it.
Yeah, I'm thinking, installation of one.
Contribution towards this would be another possibility, I think.
Yeah, I'm wondering if, you know, installation of a single catch basin, unless I'm not sure what DPW is talking about, it doesn't seem to make sense to me. But maybe what makes sense is some of the basins that are out there retrofitting them by putting in catch basin hoods, you know, or retrofitting the system that's already there. I can certainly ask the DPW about it.
Yeah. But I think just taking some steps that are meaningful to improve the water quality there.
I guess the question, maybe parallel questions to that, is if we were to take whatever steps they're talking about, is there a definable change? Is it just, is it qualitative or is it quantitative in terms of the improvement to water quality?
I think it's going to be qualitative. I mean, that's, yeah, that's what we're talking, we're talking about somehow dealing with, you know, getting the sediment out.
Having an oil gas interceptor at some point.
It really is quantitative, then. It's, we're going to change the amount of sediment in the discharge or whatever.
Yeah, right now, that tributary is loaded with, you know, sands coming from the road system. And so, yeah, if you could trap them through like a particle separator or trap them in the catch basins that are there, it would certainly help that tributary. It would certainly help the water quality, so.
Maybe the thing to do is to have you, DPW, water, Laura, put your heads together and figure out something. That's a good homework assignment.
Yep, absolutely.
We'll add to the list.
And it certainly seems like a good public benefit.
Yeah.
A question about that?
Yeah, Lance.
Laura mentioned a request for determination of applicability with the Conservation Commission that was filed by Chris Self. And I helped him with it. And one of the things that we want to resolve is the fact that the Conservation Commission already determined that there's a wetland at the culvert, you know, where the tributary starts. And technically, that makes the tributary a jurisdictional stream. So the Conservation Commission would have to weigh in on whether or not they're going to go along with the decision they already made. And I included this in the letter that we sent you. So there is an opinion that's official by the Conservation Commission that a wetland surrounds the culvert area, okay? So if that makes a stream jurisdictional, then you have to take into account whether or not you're going to alter the stream. So it's not just a matter of engineering for DPW and that kind of thing. It would have to go through the Conservation Commission and those, depending on how the request for determination would look.
Yeah, no, it's a valid point, but I think first we've got to understand what DPW is in, what they're, and they have in mind so we understand what we're looking at so we can compare to what we can do and what we can't do.
Sure, no, I get you.
Okay. And that's really, at this point, where we are. And we'd bring Concom in on the conversation. And it's not like we do in the vacuum. Okay. What else did I, you know? Easement, the landscape plan, I think we're, with the exception of the determination of what the fence is, I think we've reached pretty much closure on that.
And there's going to be new tree selection? Is that, was that part of the plan here?
I think that's what I heard, is if we're going to get rid of the crab apples and take something that's indigenous to the area adjacent to it, whether they're oak or whatever. That's my understanding of what I heard. You had a follow-up question, Lance?
Well, I've seen areas that have been disturbed in town, such as the Powers Field, and it revegetates pretty quickly. I really recommend, I mean, just personally, and I'm not sure whether Neil Duggan gave you an opinion about, you know, digging it up, but I think if you leave the area natural and let it revegetate on its own, I think you'd do something that would be more compatible with the natural features of the land. Even when you say you're going to dig up by hand without using machinery, you're still going to be poking holes in the ground and changing drainage features. And one of the concerns that's related to that is that we looked at the groundwater data, the test bed data, and we're concerned that some discrepancies in groundwater height. And I'm wondering if Mr. Cheshire could speak to that. Did you get a chance to? Describe, I. Oh, I can explain it more clearly. At the culvert area, groundwater height according to granite holes is 78.7. That's the elevation there. And then it drops considerably in parts of the 305 parcel. And it seems to be up and down, up and down, rather than following a gradual slope of the hill. I don't know if that's something that's common.
It can be. I never witnessed any tests out there, so I can't say much about it unless on record as far as what was reported and the thing. But I can tell you that the, there are a couple of factors affect the water table pretty significantly. If you have tight soils, the water table is generally only around two to three feet below grade. You have that fragile pan layer and that's going to be your water table. If you have a more permeable soil, for example, if you have like gravel or sand, which I don't think, because I don't think the soils are moderately permeable. If you have gravel or sand, the water table tends to be more level. Sort of if you went to, we don't just walk through like a hole with gravel pit, the water table tends to be fairly flat. On tight tillie soils, the water table tends to follow the surface grains. In a case like this where it's a moderately permeable, you can have areas that may have a deeper water table because the soils are a little better defense where you dig and they can bounce around a little bit. And I didn't see any, so I can't really comment on that. But the other thing is that in certain cases, if there's looking for staining in the soil and sometimes it's faint, and it's fairly subjective as to where exactly it is in some cases. Some people would say it's here, some people would say it's here, depending upon how prominent those features are. In time of year, you dig the holes, sometimes it's very, very dry. You can kind of mask some of that stuff if there's somewhat. So, not that helps anything, but that's the reality of digging holes.
So just so I understand, excuse me, Lance, was you were recommending that no trees be put there at all?
Right. And, you know, I think it would be revegetated very quickly, you know, naturally. I haven't yet a chance to look at, I haven't looked at the site, what's been disturbed in terms of how far, you know, raising the house is intruded into a non-disturbed zone. But, you know, I think you would find vegetation would return to its natural state pretty quickly.
So you're just, you're just talking about in the no disturb zone?
Yeah. You know, I'm concerned that it may set a precedent in future cases where, you know, if you allow some digging even by hand, maybe that would be used as a reason for somebody to do something else in a non-disturbed zone. I think the simple language of non-disturbed zone, it's not, not to do anything, and, you know, I think it's tended to be like that. But, you know, I didn't see Neil Duggan's opinion on it.
No, it wasn't written.
Spending time going, looking at the waivers and making decisions on waivers?
Did I?
That's a question. Do you think it's worthwhile at this point to go through and discuss the waivers?
You certainly can, yeah. I just wanted to point out as far as the waivers that the way the board has dealt with waivers with flexible open space plans before has, has not been exactly to look for a public has not been exactly to look for a public benefit for each waiver, because there's an implication with a flexible open space plan, that there's a public benefit to hold plan-
In its entirety.
In its entirety, but certainly, you know, you should be really comfortable with what those waivers are, so, yeah.
No, I don't have, though, I don't have my list in front of me.
This is remorse engineering, latest revision, 1029.
Correct.
You want to walk us through each of those, explain what the waiver is and why you'd want it?
Sure.
Just to, give me one second. I just want to find it.
Okay.
So I have something to look at. So, what is the, what is the document we're looking for?
It's, it was-
Memo from Morse Engineering to the Board.
Ah, I got it. Okay.
Got it.
Mm-hmm.
Got one dated 1029?
Yeah, received 1031.
Yep.
Okay.
It's the first waiver is section 5 dot 3 dot 2 dot 11.
Yep. That, that was a waiver that, on the conventional density plan for a flexible open space, it required the applicant to show the existing and the proposed topography for the entire site. We looked at this early on, and we determined the zoning without showing the topography. We ended up adding the proposed topography when we talked about whether or not the road could be constructed feasibly. We never graded out the individual lots, I don't believe, on the conventional density plan. We graded out the road to demonstrate the road could comply, and we showed zoning-wise that the lots all complied. We certainly can grade out all the lots if necessary, but we felt that it was a paper exercise at that point to do so if we were moving on with a flexible open space.
Any comments from the Board? Any reason why we wouldn't approve the waiver?
Seems reasonable.
Yeah, I don't know if it makes, as long as we have existing and proposed topography on the final plan, right?
I mean, if they made a change in whether they had a caper, then a raised ridge, it would make a difference in the topography and how it's graded around the house. Okay, so that's, should we vote to do the individual waivers or wait to the end, or?
Um, sure, you might as well do individual waivers.
So, I need a motion to grant the waiver?
So, who?
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. The next one?
Yep, the second one is, is along the same premises. This was a requirement to provide existing and proposed profiles, again, on the conventional density plan. We provided grading, again, of the proposed roadway. We listed the slopes that we were proposing along the roadway, but we did not provide fully designed profiles of that conventional density roadway. We were asking for that waiver. We are, we are providing full profiles for the road that we intend to build.
Comments? Motion?
So, that we accept?
Seconds.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Section 6 dot 3 dot 4 dot 2 dot A.
Yep. Soil evaluation in the area of the infiltration basin, witnessed by the town's agent. What we did is, we provided soil testing in the, in the basin. It was witnessed by the Board of Health Agent Ralph Cole. And we provided one, two, three, three test pits within that location. That was the request, that it be acceptable for the, it says town's agent. We had Ralph Cole do the witnessing.
Anyone hold, hold on to that one?
If, if not, although-
I mean, we have a report from Ralph or something?
Yep.
We do.
Ralph's-
We, we got a report from him? I don't remember if it seemed-
No, maybe we didn't.
He submits copies of signed soil evaluation logs to the Board of Health from when he witnessed them. Those are on record at the Board of Health Office.
Yeah, I don't think we ever got those logs.
Can we just verify that before we approve this?
Yeah, no, that's what I'm-
And in your waiver, he's the, the individual who's the DEP Soil Evaluator and Registered Professional Engineer, is that correct? I, I am. I'm the Registered Engineer and Soil Evaluator. He is a witness who is also a Registered Soil Evaluator.
So, you want to hold that till you see the report?
I'd just like to know that we have, that he's accepted that he's the town's witness for this and-
Okay.
Yeah, I'm, I'm sure he's the town's witness, but we don't have a copy of the soil logs that he did, so, you know, if you want to make sure that we get that, you know, or that they're on record somewhere in the town hall, you know, that might be a good reason to wait.
A question from Lance?
Lance?
Yes, when he reviews the, when he get that report, can you put in a question about the groundwater level? Because we did get a copy of the, of the test pits, and we created a table ourselves, and not a groundwater table. We did like a little thing, you know, compare the heights. I'm not an engineer, Will's not an engineer, but it just seemed to be moving up and down. And you would think, considering the consistency of the soil type, you wouldn't see such a change in groundwater elevation. So, it just would be nice to have, have a look at it in terms of the entire area instead of spot check.
Yeah, I guess, I'm not sure how we want to handle that. I mean, do you want to have some-
You can create a, you can create a model, you can create a model on the base-
I guess I'm wondering who's going to pay for that and who's going to coordinate it.
Let's take a look and see what we got from the report before we figure what we're going to do to it.
Section four, this has to do, this has to do with the proposed project, not the conventional density plan. The requirement was that the minimum vertical curve length be 100 feet for the vertical curve associated with the road. We're proposing a vertical curve of 40 feet in length. Typically, when you have a roadway, you have the slope of the roadway, and when that slope changes, you provide, you provide a transition between those two slopes. You know, and you want to make sure that it's a long enough transition so that you have, you know, on an, on an uphill slope, you don't want your, your car bumper to bump the, the ground on a change. You know, same with your, with your headlights going over a crest curve. You want your headlights to stay on the road. You don't want them out in space. With this here, with the 40-foot length vertical curve, we were able to go between our 2% and 4% change with 40 feet. It eliminates the need for excessive fill around that station, 1 plus 25. It eliminates any need for retaining wall associated with the roadway. And we felt that the transition going from a 2% to a 4.8% over 40 feet would be adequate, and that the 100 feet was not required.
And, so can you explain it to me? If the 100 feet is required, why isn't it required here?
If, if, wouldn't, wouldn't be, wouldn't be necessary to provide a, when you have a, when you have a crest like this, what you're looking for is, you're looking for the K-value, which is the change of the slopes that you're going to. And the value that we have here, the K-value, is enough so that we're not compromising the, the headlight distances, we're not compromising the quality of travel on the road. And by allowing it to be cut down to 40 feet, it allows us to keep a, a 2% slope for the first 100 feet of the roadway. Because you have, you have further in your, in your requirements that I think you have to have a continuous grade within the first 100 feet of your project. And so, we, we comply with that, and that's where our slope starts for our vertical curve. If, if we went out the full 100 feet to make vertical curve work, the roadway down the bottom here would be steeper, and it would require more fill in the middle of this roadway. We didn't think that by proposing it this way compromised any, any safety measures at all, eliminated the fill, and it created a roadway that's actually less steep at the end. It provides that, that flat surface at the beginning, or that continuous grade.
How much of a difference did that make? In the steepness of the second component of the road?
I think it made it so in the middle, we had to have, I thought it was about a foot. It's been a while since we've really changed any of the profiles. I thought it was about a foot more of height that we needed in the road.
But it didn't change the, the 5% grade?
It, it did just slightly. I think it was just over 5%. It went from 4.8 to 5.3 or so. It was about half a percent.
Is there any chance that this shorter distance creates, what is this, essentially a speed bump in the road?
No, because it's between two very shallow slopes. We're talking about going from a 2% slope to a 4.8% slope. It's relatively small. It would be more in a scenario where you were coming, and, and if you keep in mind, they're both negative slopes, so it's a slope into more of a slope. We're not coming up over a hill, and we're not creating a valley situation. So, no, it's not going to be creating a speed bump.
You've exhausted my limit of knowledge of roads.
I know you mentioned headlights, but like snowplows, all that, that's all within the realm of what it should be?
It should, yeah. It's all traversable by all of that, yep.
And really, with three houses on it, it's really, the characteristics are more of a common driveway than a, than a road. Speeds should be very moderate, moderate, yeah. Hopefully.
You figure, now, there's a lot of places in town, you know, for example, with, with driveways, where you're going from a roadway that has a cross section of a, of a 2% slope, and now you're going up a driveway at 5%. There's a, a significant change, you know, and that's where you'd want a vertical curve. Something like this, you're not going to notice it at all, that change in the slopes.
So, do I have a motion?
A move, we accept that variance.
A waiver?
A waiver, excuse me.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Waiver number five is a requirement that you have the dead-end streets shall be provided at the closed end with a cul-de-sac turnaround. The full, the fully paved cul-de-sac turnaround requires more pavement in this scenario. What we provided is, we've provided a T-style or a hammerhead style turnaround, so that we have adequate room to turn around fire apparatus. It helps reduce the amount of impervious surface that's tributary to the drainage basin and ultimately the wetlands.
And the hammerhead was approved by the chief?
Yes.
Or it was suggested by the chief?
I don't know if it was suggested by him, but it's been reviewed by him.
Okay. Comments from the Board? Motion for the Board?
Is the fire chief's okay with it? I'm okay with it.
Okay. I assume that's a motion?
So moved.
Comments in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Number six. Number six. In type two, three, and four subdivisions, vertical granite curbing shall be installed along each edge of the roadway. The proposal is to allow construction of the roadway with 12-inch Cape Cod berm or batuminous concrete berms on either side of the roadway.
What's DPW think of that?
They're not crazy about it.
Right.
I know you weren't asking me, but-
No, batuminous berm, you know, is going to get carved up by the plows, right?
It's a private roadway. It'll be privately maintained. It's at our own risk. You know, the batuminous berm is, is what's required in a lot of, in a lot of other towns. In a case like this, I don't think it's going to make a difference because it is all privately owned and privately maintained. It's not going to be an accepted street in the town.
Doesn't the curb, though, act as a stormwater channel?
It, it does, but-
Next question.
The, the Cape Cod berm, you know, will provide the same relief, provides a gutter for the-
No, that I understand, but if, if it gets torn up and disappears, it doesn't provide a gutter anymore. So, how is the, how would the homeowners' association make sure that that's maintained?
Well, I mean, what we're providing on the, on the right, the right side of this road, because this, this cross section is cross-pitched, it cross-pitches to the right-hand side, you'll see in the cross section here. Really, we're talking about gutter flow just on that side. You're not going to have an accumulation on the left at all, okay? So, accumulation's totally there. Coming up from the edge of the road, we have a lowman seed that you'll see is sloped back onto the street. It's sloped back 3% a shoulder, so that, you know, if, if that Cape Cod berm was to, was to get plowed over, was to disappear somehow, you know, you still would have an earthen embankment there. And there's enough grade on the street, the, the grade on the street, again, on the profile, is 2% and 4.8%. You're going to have water running down the street, not off the edge of the pavement, over that, over that grassed embankment.
So, the grading comes up to the-
Does the grading come all the way down? How is the grade, is it just a little bump, or is it?
It's, it's, it's two feet wide, and it's at a 3%. It's six inches high.
And where does this, where does the grade go from there?
At that location, at the back of the two-foot shoulder, it, it grades down-
It drops down.
-to meet the existing grade.
Michael?
Well, Steve had asked how we could ensure that the batuminous curb be maintained. One of, one of the major parts of the homeowners' associations is a yearly review of drainage and those types of areas. I mean, I would think a, a simple way would be to require that batuminous-
Berm.
-berm to be inspected and repaired and maintained as, as needed each year.
Is that a review that's done with somebody in the town?
Well, the, the review of the drainage and all of that is done by a registered engineer. And, and one of the terms of the homeowners' association is that a report needs to be filed yearly with the planning board, with the town planner. So, I mean, it could, you could include that as to one of the standards of review each year.
Good idea.
So, do we have the right to impose upon the homeowners' association the obligation to repair that if need be? Or can that be just wait?
Oh, I think you absolutely can make it a requirement, yes.
But, only if it starts doing, like, do damage to the town, right?
No, no, I mean, that's the-
And if, if, if the homeowners' association fails to maintain it, if you require it, then the town, or, or the town could give notice that they have to do it. And I think it says they have to remediate within a certain period of time. If they don't, then they can-
We used to have language about the town being able to lean the properties, but I don't, I haven't seen that language in a while.
Do we, do we use the-
You still have it?
It's still in there, yeah.
Does, does the town have standing to enforce a private agreement amongst homeowners?
Oh, absolutely.
Yeah, because you're approving, you know, through your actions, yeah.
Because the, the owner grants the town that right.
Okay.
Just one other thing about these roads being private in perpetuity. I talked to town council today because I figured this would be an issue that would come up, and it's, it's a real muddy area. You can put those conditions on, you can have the intention there. Is it completely ironclad? No, it's not really, because town meeting can overrule what, you know, what you all do.
Bless you.
So, bless you.
But you could do the Congress instead of sitting there and saying that-
Take the risk in town meeting.
It's a private- It's a private in perpetuity, would you put, basically put a condition that said that before it could be accepted, it would have to be brought up to current subdivision standards?
You could say that. I mean, at least then your intentions would be clear. I don't think they, they would necessarily be ironclad, but at least your intentions would be clear.
I, I either, I think I have more iron or more clad than I had before the other way.
Okay.
So the town, so from a town meeting perspective, they could override any of that and just accept it?
Yeah, that's what he said.
On the, the berm, I just wanted, what's going on right now is, what's the street called? Is it Deer, Deer Common?
Yeah.
That street right there has that concrete berm, right?
Bituminous.
I don't, they kind of, I don't think they've put, like, any kind of finished, you know, edge on that road yet.
Laura, what about, what about Tilden Farms, Laura?
Yeah, Tilden Farms did...
That had a Cape Cod berm, right?
Yeah, I think almost all of them do get built with Cape Cod berms because the granite curb is very, very expensive.
Expensive, right.
You could require it though, if you wanted to. And in particular, you know, both of those were flexible open space, Deer Common and also Tilden Estates, and I think on those, it tends to get waived.
There's a, there's an interim...
Or it has, but it doesn't have to.
Yeah. Do you use any granite at all typically, Greg, like around catch basins or at the intersection with the town roadways at the, you know, go around that corner area?
Yeah, it's, it's not, I don't think it's proposed on this plan.
And that's not a requirement at that intersection of the DPW or anywhere?
Is there a granite curb there?
I don't know.
On Countryway?
It's just an edge of pavement at that location. The answer is no, not at this scenario.
Sometimes at the intersection and at, at structures, there'll be a bit of a granite area.
Is it Doctor's Hill? I think there's granite curbing at the beginning.
Oh, yeah, I'm pretty sure there is.
Granite curb above...
Because there's granite curb along the main...
Coming along and then it goes into Cape Cod berm.
Yeah.
As that, Tilden Farms, Tilden Estates has that at the intersection and, and around catch basins.
When, when the town put in the multi-user bike path in front of my house that goes down Gannon, that's all Cape Cod berm.
Right.
Right.
Is there a reason why you were proposing to, like, do the entire thing, Cape Cod berm, as opposed to just the, or as the, at the entrance, have that be granite? Like a combination, like we mentioned?
I mean, if we, if we were tying into granite out at the street or something, I think we probably would have proposed it that way.
Kind of looks funny sitting there.
We're tying into an edge of pavement. They don't even have a berm on Countryway, so... I'm, I, I have to imagine, you know, when they, when they do the, the multi-use path on Countryway, they'll probably end up with some sort of Cape Cod berm is my guess.
If they end up with granite, will you come back and put granite in?
I think the path is going to be on the other side anyway.
Didn't they do that on Stockbridge? Didn't they do the granite curbing there? When they did the pa, or the sidewalk?
They did it on Hollit. They certainly did it on Hollit.
Yeah, they did it on Hollit.
Yeah, right.
But Hollit had granite curb before.
Looks nice, too.
Yeah.
I thought they had it down, down in the base, they had granite curb.
You're probably right. The path is going to be on the other side, right?
I think it is, yeah. I think I heard that.
Okay, so what's the pleasure of the board?
Lance has got another question.
Oh, I'm sorry.
We're concerned about the, the western slope, you know, near the road or actually along the whole project. It seems still to direct stormwater into the non-disturbed zone, which is contrary to the bylaw. And, you know, just speak to, I don't know whether you're going to discuss the roadway, you know, the, the view, the distance, site distance to drive again, but I think all the abutters surrounding this project are against the three houses, so I don't think you're going to get much luck getting an easement from neighbors who live next to this project.
Well, time will tell.
We'll get to that.
But that's one item that we're not going to do conjecture on. We're going to either know if the easement is there or it's not.
But the slope we're talking about here, that slopes left to right in this, in this profile, is sloping away from the non-disturbed zone?
It all, the roadway itself here slopes this way.
Okay, so the cross...
Through this berm. And then it runs down the berm to the catch basin, down the berm to the other catch basin, and to the detention basin.
And then it kicks up for two feet, you said, before sloping back down to the non-disturbed boundary.
Correct, so from that berm, there's a two-foot shoulder that's raised up.
I was thinking that was the other side, that the cross-section was going the other way.
The cross-section would fall down.
This is, this is actually reversed from what we're used to looking at. Somehow it got changed around.
Took me awhile to figure that out.
Yeah.
Okay.
Now, where are we with the motion on the vertical granite curbing?
On substituting bituminous berm?
Yep.
I would approve that waiver.
I have a motion to...
I, I would approve it provided that we have the protections in the, in the right of...
Yeah, right.
About the engineer's review and the ability to, to enforce action if it's, if it needs to be repaired.
Fair enough.
Do we want to see that language as part of the, the conservation restriction that we, that we spoke about earlier? Maybe that could come in at the same time?
For homeowners. I mean, I can do it very quickly and easily included in the homeowners' association.
I understand, but what I'm saying, what I'm saying is when you, when you bring in the conservation restriction, if you'd bring in the proposed language that's going to be in the homeowners' association documents reflecting that, then we'd know what to work with. Okay.
So I have a motion? Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Item seven?
Item seven, the requirement is that there be sidewalks on both sides of the street for type three and four subdivisions. We're asking for a waiver to provide a sidewalk on the left side of the street only.
Left side walk in which way? You got me with the cross-section already.
The cross-section is as you're facing down the street.
Okay.
The sidewalk is on the left side, the southern side of the street. We feel that one sidewalk is adequate for the three homes. It doesn't tie into any sidewalk. I understand there's a future one coming in or a pathway anyways, so we've provided access out to Countryway with the one. It also allows us to reduce the impervious surface and therefore the drainage.
Is the cross-section, Greg, on that, I forget, showing a strip of grass between the road bituminous and the sidewalk pavement?
It does. It shows the, the edge of the Cape Cod berm.
Yeah.
There's a four-foot grass strip.
Okay.
And then the sidewalk is five feet wide.
And will that be, that four-foot strip be the location of the street trees? Or are they on the inboard side of the sidewalk?
On the, they're on the right-of-way side of the sidewalk. They're outside of the sidewalk.
Between the sidewalk and the road?
Correct, in the right-of-way line.
Okay.
Anything else? Motion?
Move to accept the request for a waiver?
Second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Eight?
Eight, this is a waiver from the street table and typical roadway cross-section. The typical roadway cross-section that you require, I believe, is 24 feet of pavement, has the sidewalks on both sides, and it has a crown on the road so that the middle of the road becomes a drainage point separating drainage to either side of the street. Where we've asked for the reduction in the size of the, the roadway, we've asked for a waiver down to 16 feet of pavement. We feel that 16 feet is adequate, again, for three houses. That's what is proposed on any common driveway project where you're allowed to have three houses. It also allows us to cut down the drainage that's emanating from the site. Included with the cross-section is, again, the waiver that you just granted, the reduction in the sidewalks from both sides of the street to one side of the street in the cross-slope, providing a cross-slope across the street as opposed to crowning it in the middle and creating two separate drainage channels.
Any questions in the board?
Yeah.
Motion from the board?
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Nine?
Nine. Section nine, there's, this is the requirement that the area outside of the traveled way, cut or filled, be sloped at a rate of not steeper than three vertically to one horizontally. Because we've been granted the waiver above, which allows us to pull all of the street requirements into the right-of-way, we haven't asked for a reduction in the right-of-way width. We still have a standard 42-foot wide right-of-way. But now, rather than having 24 feet of pavement, grass strips, and sidewalks, because we've reduced all of that, we really can start grading to catch up to our existing grades at the back, at the back edge of the sidewalk. And that is with inside the 42-foot wide right-of-way. We've asked that we be allowed to grade at a rate of three to one, which is exactly what the board allows at that same location if it was built to full scale.
Comments, questions in the board?
So this is essentially just sort of the miniaturized version of, of the typical roadway cross-section?
Correct.
The slope is not any different than what it would look like if it was a full 24 feet wide and everything?
Correct. It would be at the same location at the back, back of the sidewalk. It's just that the sidewalk and everything has been pulled inside that 42-foot wide right-of-way.
Anything else? Motion?
A move to approve?
A second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Number 10.
Number 10. The requirement is to have street trees planted on both sides of the street. What we are proposing is street trees on one side of the road, as shown on the landscape plan at the back edge of the sidewalk there, on the side where the houses are to be constructed. On the other side of the street, not planting street trees because we will have our fence or wall there at the edge of the right-of-way, and then providing additional plantings within that natural area, that 150-foot no disturbance zone, rather than lining that side here with standard street trees, providing trees within these locations and providing the fence there.
And what's the reason? I'm, I'm still not, I mean, I, I understand why you're asking, but what's the, why is it better or not?
Well, at the, at the side here, what we're going to, what we're going to end up with is we have the grass shoulder, two feet off the back of the Cape Cod berm, and then it's sloping from that location down to what the grade was. So the trees would be planted, you know, on, on that slope at that location, or down at the toe of the slope, okay? Not saying it's not feasible, but that's also the location of the, of the fence that we're going to be putting up.
That's right. What's the general, or least, dimension between the fence and the edge of pavement?
Nine feet.
Okay, so that's quite a bit.
And that's nine feet to the fence or the wall? That, that's...
Nine feet from the back of the berm to the fence.
And...
And that's a continuous downslope?
It's two, two feet of relatively flat, and then it slopes down at three to one.
Where do you anticipate snow is going to be stored in the event of a, you know, plow, plow snow event?
You'd, you'd end up plowing right down, down the street. You have a large section here to stockpile it. And you have, again, when you come down here, you'll have the area all in here to stockpile.
Okay, because you, you wouldn't want it thrown out towards the, towards the fence area and down that slope?
Effectively, because you're not, you're not plowing the, the curb, you're, you really have the curb plus you have that two-foot of shoulder, so you have effectively three feet along the whole edge of that roadway. On, on that side, on the other side, you have more because you have a four-foot wide grass strip.
If...
But with a lot of plowing out, a lot of roll over that, right?
Well, if you're, if you're careful, I mean, think of the guy that plows your driveway, because this is more like a driveway than a road. If he doesn't, if he doesn't do a good job, you're going to get, you're going to get another plow, plow man. Question, if we're not going to be putting that vegetation back into the wetlands, as Lance suggested, and I think that's a pretty good idea, is there some kind of low shrubbery that could be used along the other side of the road from the street trees between the roadway and the fence that would form a vegetated barrier towards, to people who might want to trespass onto the protected area? And also further stabilize the slope in terms of any kind of erosion that might want to take place or slow down groundwater, same thing?
Basically putting in a shrub type?
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, between the fence and the edge of pavement, put some kind of a shrub that would spread out, grow, and kind of fill that area in, but not be very, not be very high.
I seem to recall recommending poison ivy once.
Well, no. I wasn't thinking of that.
Beach roses in there or something?
I think whatever goes in there would be nice if you could, if you could use it that way as a barrier. I'm still...
Oh, I would still have the fence. I would want this in addition to the fence.
Yeah, I'm just wondering aesthetically how the fence really works at the bottom of the slope.
Yeah, I don't, I think you're right.
If there's any possibility of bringing it up to the top.
I think the danger of that is now it's so close...
I mean, it'd be a lot more aesthetically...
Now it's so close to the road that I, I kind of worry about that.
It's going to drop two feet by the time you get to where the fence is.
Yeah.
Three to one slope?
In some places.
Three to one.
I mean, you just wonder if there's that slope there, how tempting it would be to kind of dump your grass clippings down that hill, and then they kind of just, I don't know.
Fill in that little void.
Just don't look that great.
Another good reason to get it, get it full of gorse or something.
You know, maybe you could put some kind of juniper on it or something to make it, you know, to hold, to hold the slope and make it look a little better.
Right.
Although I'm still a little concerned about that, that fence being at the bottom of the hill.
Bill, Lance?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Need a beepers.
Yeah.
You know, one of the concerns that we've seen throughout this project is originally where there could be some mature trees saved, and then one mature tree saved, now no mature trees saved. You're basically saying this whole site is being stripped completely out and, you know, trees put in. Knows how big they're going to be when they are put in, when they're put in, whether or not people are going to maintain them. I mean, you don't have the, it's going to be a dramatic change in the way this area looks. So just wanted to make that comment that, again, you know, if it was a smaller project, it would be losing all those trees. But that seems to be part of the spirit of the flexible open space bylaws, trying to minimize changes to the natural features.
Understood. Okay, now we're, we're at the end of our time. Let me go through what I think your homework assignment is going to be for our next meeting.
Great.
Feel free to add additional stuff here if you got it. One is, I think we, you need a formal response to John's memo, John's summary. Two is the testing report. Laura, I guess we'll follow up on that.
Yep.
The benefit is part of that, I guess you'll work with or meet with DPW, Water, and Laura, and see what we can do with that. The fence, I guess we're going to look for a proposal from you for the fence in light of the conversation we've talked to, whether it's augmented with, with shrubbery or whether it's augmented with bob wire or whether it's augmented electronically, whatever, whatever it is.
Okay. Could I add, could I modify that one thing, Bill?
Sure.
Could you, when you do that, come back in with, like, a cross-section that shows what that will look like?
Yes.
I mean, the hole from the road down?
With true vertical scale, obviously, not the exaggerated.
Sure.
Okay, so that takes care of the fence?
Yep.
Okay. The CR, any owner, homeowners, Michael? I guess that's your homework?
Yes.
The basin meeting, I think we've talked about waivers, just to make sure that these are all of the waivers that you're looking for?
Yep.
Yep.
Did we actually approve that last waiver?
No, we didn't.
No, no. I think we should wait till we...
Yeah, I think we have a report coming back from a landscape-related thing here at some point, don't we? Maybe that could be addressed by the landscape architect person. I'm sorry.
No. Then, we've got the outstanding issue with the RODA request, that, and then, I think...oh, I'm sorry.
Catch basin?
The catch basin, we talked about, that's the meeting, and the easement for the sightlines, is that or an alternative?
Yes.
Did I miss anything?
One thing we didn't really discuss was the discussion about the design relative to low-impact design.
Good point.
I guess I'd like somebody to address whether there's an opportunity, whether we're doing it here. I guess I haven't really heard anything on it, whether there's an opportunity to do that here.
That might actually be a good question for John. I don't know if you've reviewed the plans sufficiently, John, to see that there is or isn't opportunity for LID that's not being taken advantage of.
I would say that there's pretty limited opportunity the way this is laid out. Every inch of the...you have the road, you have the lots. The lots are small. There's really not much room the way this is set up to do...I mean, LID, you know, could you do a permeable driveway? Maybe that would help some, I guess. You could do permeable pavement. It wouldn't necessarily be permeable pavement for the road itself.
Right.
Driveways, you could do that. I don't see where you could really...or where benefits swale, because the way the sight lies, you've got one lot with another lot below it. You don't really want to just swale it off the top lot, then into the next guys, and then into the next guys. No reason to want that.
Sure.
I mean, permeable pavement, you might be able to do for the driveways. Although they're not that they're huge, but that might give you a little something.
Okay.
Is, you know, they have subsurface infiltration systems for the roof. Could you do a rain gun? This size lot, you're going to lose...
Right, usable space, right.
Now you're going to enforce it.
Right.
It's going to take up the whole yacht.
Right. The first thing you'll do is fill it in.
Right.
How much of that is subsumed in the idea of a flexible open space development to begin with? At some point, if you're doing that, you're looking at the idea of a low-impact development, sort of by definition, I would think.
Well, I think we had it on our list because it's...
It's one of the things we have to talk about.
One of the things that I just want to make sure we've exhausted that subject.
Yeah, yeah, no, and I agree. That's where I'm coming from as well. I'm not expecting it to...
But I think what we need is to make sure that it's been reasonably addressed.
Right. Or that it's been considered is better, yeah.
Now, the next item is, when do we meet again?
Well, after the Conservation Commission, certainly, which is when, the 24th?
24th or the 26th, I'm not sure which. Maybe the 25th.
This out. It starts to become a little bit busy because we have so many applications in front of you right now, but December 5th at 9:00 PM.
Think we can get everything done by then?
I think so.
So I need a motion to continue to December 5th. Do we have a motion made?
Actually, I want to lead this to that meeting.
Oh, here it is. Oh, okay. You can still make the motion.
Yeah, of course. I'm just letting you know. All right. I move to accept the applicant's request to continue the public hearings for the definitive subdivision plan, flexible open space special permit, and scenic road public shade tree hearing for White Ash Farm Lane at 305 Country Way until December 5th, 2013, 9:00.
Have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good night.
Good night, Michael.
Good night, Mike. I don't know if it's much longer than usual.
Like that pride in the well, it only jumps halfway, and halfway.
I mean, what...
Eventually.
Now, correct me if I'm wrong, if I missed something, but...
You know, I think I've mentioned this a couple...
The whole thing about two houses. If these guys did one of those flexible, they could accommodate three houses without even...
I think that's the nature of this.
You've already said, this is...
The only counter argument to that is, do they have to build a...
I guess I know from my own experience, it's hard to...
But I'm saying, that's all the...
Has to take responsibility for it.
And take responsibility, but it was almost irresistible to sort of look at it.
I think the fact of the matter is, yes.
That's the reason why I asked the question.
Does the town have a stand and enforce a private agreement to the homeowners?
Now, the arguments...
Maybe they do.
One or three on this.
Does the town have the...
Sort of, not even two thirds or three.
I don't know.
I don't know.
Would that be...
A little bit. I mean, I think the argument they're making is just less is less.
Cancel it.
Well, it's sort of an emotional argument, it's qualitative.
As long as you're available, if anything comes up in the meantime, we think we'll be fine.
I feel like we've sifted through a lot of the issues.
Yeah, but what I'm looking for is, when I see his answer to the...
Right now, they very much have the ability to say, you can only...
Lot for you guys still to do.
Even now.
Right.
More than three.
And the applicants would have the...
They can withdraw and come back with a convention. Yeah, exactly. My mind, it's sort of, okay, what's the balance?
Are you going to...you sticking around for Monty Tree Hill for a minute?
You know, it's kind of this list, you know, that you put together. What are positives and what are negatives overall, which I don't see.
And if it's a flexible, then we have the right to condition. It comes this way, and Jericho's right here. There's a house right on the corner, and there's a double ground.
Unless there's a...
There needs to be some sort of...
Well, right.
Not an attic, but a cellar.
Okay, so then we won't do it then?
You know, a crawl space or something. It's stolen.
You can't do it?
Somebody needs to build a little bit of house.
We're not where we needed to be to basically resolve that.
To resolve?
It's right at the light.
Which one?
They wanted the final release.
Oh, the performance part?
Here's the Beaver Dam. This is Jericho.
Yep. Can we close them? There's a house right here on the corner.
Long street, house with bear.
A long-running battle.
So this is that lane.
The issue is how many of them are stolen.
It actually connects back to what the...
I don't know.
It actually kind of goes...So John's building...
Jesus.
Is that right? They had a bunch of them stole?
What a world. That's what Bill just said.
Those aren't...
What's iron scrap going for a pound these days?
Three cents a pound?
I don't know.
Twenty a pound?
Yeah. We have our scrap pumps behind us. Let's see if we can wrap this up here.
You have to work.
Next item on the agenda, manufacturers will scrap them, or people bring them back. We used to leave them out back behind the chain link fence until they were all gone. So now we actually put them inside the yard with the barbed wire fenced, because...
Are we supposed to be...
We used to have...
RCA Victor.
So the next item we got is to review the RFP.
Substations behind fences, where people would go in and try to take the copper out of the...
You got paper on that?
Live transformers.
Yeah, I have paper on that.
Oh, nice. I hope they're observing the...
Yes, I think none of them were very successful.
No, no. A few deaths.
And then, of course, their families sued whoever didn't lock the transformer vaults or something like that.
There was always litigation.
Okay, so I made a couple of changes here, which are mostly involving the schedule for the RFP, which are that...
So this is, if I may, this is basically the one that we've done before, with the updating to people and websites and so forth?
It's the one we've done before, except that now we're acknowledging that this person, whoever they are, or people, whoever they are, will be used by the ZBA, possibly the CONCOM, and the planning board.
Oh.
So it's a multipurpose type of arrangement, and as it stands now...
So any one of those groups can request their services?
Yeah.
Yeah, under this contract.
Yeah, we're using them now to inspect some 40Bs, which is a good thing. They're complicated sites. There's a lot going on on them. The review right now is being...the review of the applicants is being proposed to be a committee, which would include...had a little trouble getting everyone represented, but also not so many people that it becomes cumbersome trying to make a decision. So the committee would be at least...let's see where I said. I thought it was there, sorry.
Where's that committee?
I'm looking for that.
That's the CPU? No, the evaluation committee.
It'd be on the top of page five.
Five point two.
Yeah, there we go.
Right now, we've got a committee which only includes one planning board member. If you want me to change that, I'll change it. I'm kind of torn between making it the planning board that decides this for these other boards, or whether to have...
We'd much rather have it be the planning board decides it for the other boards.
I would say the opposite. We don't want to be responsible for any decisions.
Exactly.
Solely responsible.
So...
Bone up and take the responsibility.
The last time we did this, it was...yeah, it's coming back. The way we did this, Bill and DPW and I interviewed, and then we made a recommendation to the planning board. So maybe that's how we should do it again. Have all these people interview, and then make a recommendation to the planning board, and have the planning board vote it. But it's still ultimately got to be decided by the town administrator. There's something that she is particularly concerned about. She will, you know, have that ability to make a final decision.
And that was the way we did it before.
Yeah, that's the way we did it before.
So we're not voting to approve, we're voting to recommend to approve?
Exactly.
So it'll be recommended to us, or recommended to...
Yeah.
To the town administrator.
I want to write you all into it, because you had that role before of approving this, and you might as well still have it.
And is the nature of the proposal, they're submitting man-hour pricing? Is that what they're doing?
It's not a price proposal until you've selected the candidates, as I believe, right?
Yeah.
You don't open the price package.
No.
But that's ultimately what you'll have, is you'll have fixed rates for a period of time.
We will. It'll be for three years, and what none of them seem to be able to do is to include the cost of the incidentals in their hourly cost. So we're always...
Those are always split out.
Extra per mileage and so on, so...
That's really hard to do.
Yeah, I can...
Okay, so you're going to rework 5.2.8?
Without overestimating.
Yeah, I'm going to rework that.
Okay.
Was there any language in the RFP that Bills and Thomas didn't want to, that they were bowing out, or was the actual contract that they had issue with?
It was the actual contract.
Okay. So nothing...
And that contract's not changing either, right?
No, the contract's not changing.
Okay.
So we did, I think, give it a good try, but it just wasn't going to happen.
And the problem with them is their Arizona missions carrier just wouldn't buy off on it. Is that...do I remember that right?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's typically it. What was it generally they wouldn't buy off on? Do you recall?
There was language about who was liable and who wasn't liable in case of, you know, a major mistake, and the town was saying that they absolutely weren't accepting any liability whatsoever. And I think that became a problem, that was spelled out that way for them, because then I think they felt that they would get more liability than they should have.
So was this defense and indemnity language?
Sorry?
Was this defense and indemnity language on the part of, within the...not only where the town is refusing to accept liability, but the town is imposing upon the engineer an obligation to defend and indemnify the town from whosoever negligence it might turn out to be?
I believe it was that type of language.
Well, no wonder the carrier wouldn't buy off on it. That's...you're making the insurance company responsible for the town's negligence if that happens.
Yeah, I think that was...I don't remember the exact wording, but it was that kind of thing.
I understand that, but...
But it sounds like not in this case.
Not in this case.
I'll show you the contract, and you can see what you think about it.
Okay. I mean, you know, we've had that problem too. We've had to refuse commissions because of that sort of language. And if your insurer won't back you, then you have no choice.
Yeah, you can't do it.
You have no choice.
Yeah, so...
So you want us to look at this and get back with any comments we have?
Yeah, that would be great. Thank you.
You'd like that done before Monday?
Yeah, sure.
And if I might ask, with respect to the defense and indemnity language that we spoke about, whose requirement is that?
There's some kind of a standard contract, which it hasn't always been used here, but the town administrator has always used this particular contract, and, you know, various other towns have used it.
It's like a Massachusetts...it's like, it's a contract that's sort of a template that's been created by...
It's a template for some towns, where she has worked, and she feels this is like a really solid, gold-plated contract, and this is the contract to use.
I wonder, would it go through the IG's office?
You know, one of the rules out there in the world is you can't contract away liability for your...
Look at it to say, this is, you know...
Probably the IG's office would be my guess.
I think...
Your explaining is actually better than the consultant did, because we have long conversations trying to get at what the model was.
Well, you know why that stuff is a function of...
And he's a very charming, relaxed kind of person, and just very pleasant to talk to, but there was this big problem, and it wasn't going away.
This is the rule that I live in. With only those players who are willing to take...
Yeah, sometimes...
If I give a few minutes, yeah, I mean, it's...
Pay for that coverage with the insurance company, right?
I mean, is it insurable at all? That's the question.
And we should probably talk to some insurance companies.
Well, don't they have to submit insurance certificates?
Whole specialty out there.
I think they do, right?
Which means their insurer would have to review the contract.
Have to do with insurance coverage, and whether or not we could get, you know, a firm to come in and talk to us about this and say, number one, is it enforceable, and number two, does it limit the scope of the available engineers to the point where we are essentially over a barrel, and we're not really in a cost-competitive circumstance in terms of bidding?
Yeah.
That's my thought.
Well, as Steve said, somebody must be able to bid on this, because we have engineers.
Right, and they may be building in higher costs as a result of it.
Yeah, that's where I'm going. You know, they're building in higher costs, and they're willing to take the risk.
Does their insurance premiums higher?
Or I think they're such small firms that they don't have a council in-house that's reviewing it.
That may be, or they're just willing to take the risk.
But don't you require an insurance certificate?
Yeah, I'm sure they do.
So the insurance company has reviewed it if nobody else has.
Right.
Okay, so...
So if you've got any comments, get back. Laura knows.
Got it.
Okay.
And counting? Somehow, I'm not surprised.
A lot of bills.
How about a simple motion to pay all the bills?
Yes.
In a timely manner.
Using town funds.
Whoever's holding the bills has to pay them.
Say what they are.
It's my motion.
Pass them out.
In Vegas.
All right. I move that we approve $2,110 for engineering peer review by Chesia Consultants for the flexible open space of 305 Country Way, and $1,538.78 for Bills and Thomas for 214 Clap Road, flexible open space subdivision, and $361.80 for legal ads in the Situate Mariner for the zoning citizens petition on 1010 and 1017, and a legal ad for the scenic road hearing for 214 Clap Road on 1010 and 1017.
Do we have to keep the cost for that?
Yeah, I thought...did they pay for it, but it went into the general fund?
They gave us a check, and we deposited the check in the revolving accounts, so we're just paying this out of the account.
And $360...or, sorry, $396.39 to, let me see, Bills and Thomas again, for the flexible open space subdivision, Deer Common, and its construction inspection. And last but not least, $86 to printing of the plans for the Deer Common for new construction inspection... for new construction inspection. That's it.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, all those signing those, good minutes.
All right, then just a second. And I move that we approve-
What are you doing this?
We only have one. I move that we approve the Situate Planning Board minutes for October 24th, 2013.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I thought we had two.
No, I just saw one here.
Yeah, well, we're signing those. How about the town plan report?
Okay, I had an interesting-
Can I interject? Just liaison thing?
Yeah.
Real quick, I sent everybody a copy of the EDC-
Yep.
Report.
I saw that I got it.
The first phase of, there's still a second component to it that's due to come. But they did not talk about it, as Richard knows, yesterday. They canceled the meeting, and it's due to be December 4th. So, if you're interested in attending, it's December 4th at the WPA building, 7 o'clock. But I will be there.
Richard will be there.
Richard's gonna be in Las Vegas.
Shanghai or Hong Kong or somewhere.
Yeah, I would encourage everyone to read those, the two documents, the PDF documents.
I think pretty interesting.
Yeah.
Because I read your show at the wrong meeting, I think.
I know. Yeah, you were my eyewitness, that I actually did. I was there at the WPA.
Now, we're back to the town report.
Which is a great segue into this schedule I'm handing out, which is the prospective timeline for zoning articles for 2014, which means that we have a lot of deadlines, as usual, with zoning articles. And we have to actually really jump on the train, which is kind of, you know, in the station right now, ready to take off for town meeting in April, to get everything done that we want to get done. I think both of these articles are not really all that complicated. It's just, they could have, you know, different sets of political ramifications that need to be sorted out. I'll start with the medical marijuana. I went to the medical marijuana workshop today in Weymouth, and it's really, I think, along the lines of where the planning board has already been going, that we need to go. The planner in Dennis was there. They've got five applications in front of them for these medical marijuana dispensaries right now in the town of Dennis, of all places. So, if they could be in Dennis, then maybe they could be here.
Regional.
They're waiting for the summer growth.
Yeah, maybe, yeah. So, they're getting applications for a lot of steel buildings, which are not really the kind of thing that you'd want to have in your business district. The security has got to be a big part of these, you know, of these dispensaries, because it is an all-cash business, as we've talked about.
Hey, Jim?
Thanks.
Thank you.
It's gonna mean people bringing, you know, thousands of dollars with them in cash, and then leaving with thousands of dollars' worth of marijuana plants, or whatever it is that they're gonna have. So, one thing I think we ought to do is either Eric or Richard, and/or Bill and I, because Eric and Richard have been working on this, you know, steadily, our subcommittee, we should try to meet with the police chief and see what he sees as priorities for this, and make sure he's comfortable with the whole idea, because, you know, of course, we've had a change in police chief over the past, you know, the past couple months. So, I would say we should do that, and then just continue with the article. Some towns are not being overly concerned with setbacks from daycare, because they don't really see kids that age who are really well-supervised as like a real, actual market for this.
Target audience.
Target. They're more concerned with schools and libraries and places where kids could be kind of milling around on a playground, you know, that kind of thing, instead of, you know, a daycare where it's, you know, it's, there are limited opportunities for kids to really come in contact with any of this. So, one other thing that a lot of towns are thinking about is that having some kind of a district for these gets in the way a little bit of the hardship cultivation, which could mean that there's, you know, people growing and, you know, dispensing, not dispensing, but growing and using marijuana products, you know, in different locations all over town. If there's a place where they can get it, and it's supervised, and it's legitimate, then they can't get the hardship exemption. So, you know, that's kind of a, you know, backdoor kind of benefit to this. So, I think that won't be, you know, too, too difficult. The issues are difficult, but I don't think the zoning has to be difficult. On the village business overlay district, I've had some discussions with Adam Brodsky, also with Samantha Woods about some of the environmental issues, because this kind of butts up to the North River. And again, I think you're gonna want some kind of a setback from the North River. You're gonna want to, you know, redefine that district. You're gonna really want to look at the MBTA property. I think that has to be included in it. And the Celtic Paws, and the Animal Hospital. But, you know, I don't think it needs to be a huge area beyond that.
Who was it that sent the blurb around saying that there was a, apparently there's a period that it's to be sold as surplus property?
Was it one of you all? MSBA?
Just that they were looking at it, and it was going to be sold. It was in the Boston Business Journal. It was like one line, saying that the-
It's probably, that spot, though, would probably be open to it, right? I mean, it's not heavily used or anything, so.
Can we zone that, because it's not town property, it's MBTA property? Can we zone it?
Yep, yep, you can definitely zone it. I mean, you can also zone, and I think it would make sense to do so, the property that has the station actually on it, which probably won't be spun off, but it makes it all continuous with the rest of the district, so.
Could we zone the recycling center?
Yeah, you could, if you want to go in that direction, yeah.
And the landfill?
And the golf course?
Yeah.
Probably not the golf course.
Some people, you know, might be very interested in that. I think the danger of making it too big is then, you know, you're really spreading it out.
I think the train station makes sense, though, to integrate that, because you really want an integrated thought process when you're developing there.
Because then, you know, if the MBTA, for instance, could lease some space out of, you know, for development if they wanted to?
Mm-hmm.
You know, those kinds of things?
Yeah.
And then Situate Pipe would fall into that too. Does it, do I remember that right?
Yep.
Okay.
You're gonna go as far as well, or are you gonna go to Windmill, the wind turbine?
Yeah, some people would love that. So, anyhow, that means that, you know, because the timeframe is really fairly short, we're gonna have to, I'm gonna have to get started putting some zoning together. Well, well, I won't say well before it's due to the selectmen. I think we'll have to put in a placeholder for town meeting in the beginning of December. December 12th, I believe, is the date to get a memo to the selectmen telling them that we want to have these two zoning articles. And then there are some dates for workshops, which would be-
Laura, just one more thing on the village overlay. Are you anticipating all we're gonna be doing is drawing boundaries that don't now exist, and extending the existing village overlay district zoning to those boundaries? We're not gonna be attempting to change any of the provisions of that zoning bylaw or regulation?
Well, I mean, I think it's a good opportunity to make a few tweaks to it.
Okay.
And, yeah, I think, well, one of the issues that's been raised has been requiring just the building switch front on, on main roads to have to have the mixed-use component. And it seems to be going in that direction anyway. So, it might be good to just, you know, establish that in the zoning, that that's all people really have to do. And then maybe at least you could get that, as opposed to, you know, not getting the mixed-use at all, you know, which, you know, I think you definitely want that mixed-use.
Yep, definitely.
Except possibly as you go off-countryway, down Ford Place and Drew Place, and you're really kind of back in the, you know, the kind of backwoods of Green Bush Village. Maybe it doesn't make sense there so much to have mixed-use, because yourself, or at least allow an option to have, you know, complete residential, you know, if you wanted to.
If I'm jumping ahead a little bit, just tell me, stop me. But my question is, what can we learn from the very effective campaign put on by the library committee at the last town meeting, to make sure that these things all fly?
Communication?
Well, yeah, I mean, they did, they did a great job, and they convinced the town to come up with $12 million bucks.
I'm not carving a fish, I'm sorry.
Well, they were very organized. They didn't have a tremendous number of people up there, but they had, you know, they had the people.
The work was all done before the meeting, though, is the thing, I think.
Yeah.
They had the support before people ever showed up. And, you know, we've, we've advanced a couple of things over the last year that have not, not done well. And, you know, and they came in with what arguably is, is as tough of a sell as anything we've attempted to do, and they were able to make it happen. And so, I'm just suggesting that we should focus on what they did, learn from their successes and our errors, and let's be successful in April.
I'd say that's true, but I also would say they had a-
Pardon?
I would say that's true, but I would also say they had a primary driver in that they were gonna lose the $5 million grant.
Yes, yeah, and I understand.
They also had a more attractive product. I mean, they're talking about something that would increase amenity in the town. We went in trying to reduce, as opposed to augment or increase.
Well, I'm also including- We got an idea. Yeah, I'm also including the idea of the ocean school thing that we, that we pushed a year or so ago.
Well, that's, that's-
You know, so, and I'm thinking, you know, that they obviously had a system, and they had a plan. And we need to, we need to figure out our own system and our own plan, you know, on a case-by-case basis. But we should have a method for getting these things passed. And a sort of a checklist approach, saying, okay, this is our campaign for what we're gonna do. You know, how are we gonna make this work?
It's an interesting topic, because what we are doing as elected officials is representing the town. If you go to town meeting, and people vote not to pass something that we've put before town meeting-
I get really upset.
That's the, that's the voice of the town.
Yeah, you know, so it's a lot like a vote of no confidence.
That's the voice of the people we represent. Not necessarily.
A lot, yeah, but I understand. But there's a subtlety as to whether it's the product, or whether it's the voice.
Right, right.
Getting back to other changes, I was curious, what about the one, you know, Eric brought that up? We're going about 100 feet, I think, on the main road, or 50 feet, where we said that it was based on the planning board? You know, we changed that very, fairly minor wording, but then that didn't get passed because of, we didn't show like what it was before, the actual, like, current zoning bylaw, and then the new proposal? That was really, I think, why that got voted down. Is that something we should revisit?
That, that whole situation is still kind of a mystery to me, what was, what, what that was all about. I mean, we could certainly do something like that, but it would take up a ton of room in the booklet. I don't know if it would be worth the cost.
Well, let's just say-
We're gonna be doing the same thing if we make changes to the town.
Which one is this?
Well, there was, there was a certain, there was a requirement in the-
You came back up, and the issue was, the comment that was made, it said there and says that, and it had to do with, the statement had to do with underlying zoning. Right, it complied, it had to comply with underlying zoning. And one of the things that we didn't have was the ability to waive frontage. And because we didn't have that ability, it went under existing zoning, which allowed us, it required 112, it was 102. And at that point, what we did is we changed that sentence in front of the underlying zoning to allow the variance, allow the adjustment in frontage.
It's at the discretion of the planning board.
At the discretion of the planning board. And what happened was, is the article was there, and we made it very simple. So, they're saying, we're gonna, we're gonna take this sentence, or we're gonna change this sentence. And Peter Toppin came up and basically said there and said, "In the past, what we've done with zoning is to sit there and show what the wording was before, or what the wording was after." So, instead of showing the whole, just one sentence, what Peter was expecting to see was the entire zoning bylaw.
Holy cow.
Well, the entire article, or section of the zoning bylaw.
And because of that, basically, it came back up, and the meeting decided that made sense that everybody else decided it was the last.
So, why wouldn't we propose that again, and do what was suggested?
Well, I think we will, but I think there's additional things that we're gonna need, because we're gonna change the map.
I think there's gonna be, you know, some different sections, and then, you know, there is gonna be the map change, but one of the things that-
No, I mean, this particular change, that you're talking about, is this a long article?
My question really was, do we need to repropose?
And it's like four words?
It's the village overlay.
Not sure.
We're changing one sentence, and the village overlay is-
It was kind of specific?
Yeah, it was kind of specific to that one parcel.
Yeah, I mean, it seems to me you could go bold, you could bold the change and, you know, pass it around like that.
We might get something out of clarifying it, because-
Oh, just three or four, four or five pages, though.
On word, cross out some, you know, cross out whatever you want to cross out, and-
So, do we read it?
Well, and I also think, maybe, this is just my opinion, but the wording that said "at the discretion of the planning board", I think people were like, oh, we're just giving them free rein to do whatever they want. Even though they didn't understand it, it was like-
Well, there's lots of places that are at the discretion of the planning board.
I know, of course. I'm just saying that, I'm trying to make some kind of sense as to why that got voted down. And that's all I can really think of.
I think it was one of those perfect storm kind of moments, where a lot of things came together. And-
There was the huge confusion about the tax, the meals tax.
There was all of that, and I, you know, I come back to what I mentioned a little earlier. I think we need to give some thought as to how we're gonna mount the campaign, which is what it really is, to pass these things that we're sponsoring, or that we're supporting. And I really like what Bob had to say, and that is, we're the elected officials in the town that are pushing these things, and the people elected us to make these decisions, and to advance these things on their behalf, and if they don't support us, we haven't done our job right. And I-
Or we've misconstrued the will of the people.
Yeah.
I mean, there's, there's no-
That's part of our job, yeah, but-
Yeah. Okay, you're right.
What was the article?
I guess you're right about that, of course.
I'm trying to think, was it in the Boston Globe that came out about the EDC?
About North Situate?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, I mean, you could tie, you could have an article in the Mariner that ties this saying, "This particular zoning change proposal of extending the business village overlay district can put the framework for potential more retail commercial development, easing the tax burden on the North Situate tax area."
That's probably what you need, is you need an article with three or four, you know, proposals from the planning board, that says, what's, what's the value, right? What's the value, why are you doing this, right?
Here's the goal, here's how you're gonna get it.
Somebody, I think it was, I think it was you, Richard, had talked about doing editorials in the Mariner, and this might be a good opportunity to do something like that. I think another thing to be sure that we do is to do good handouts at town meeting, which we, we didn't do for those last couple of zoning articles that kind of, you know, went south. Because sometimes you can show a lot with diagrams, particularly if you're doing a map change, you want to have all the parcels shown on the map, so people know exactly what's included and what isn't, and any other changes. You have some kind of an outline for it. We could do a PowerPoint.
Could we?
I think so. I mean, I think it's been done, that, yeah.
Well, it was time for the window.
You know, one thing, too, is, you know, I'll mention names, you know, young Mr. Bjorkland, whom we all know and love. He told me, and he may have told some of you as well, he told me in so many words, that he was going to actively oppose what we were pushing for the accessory dwelling bylaw.
Yeah.
And I frankly just didn't take him seriously, because I'm figuring, okay, you know, everybody knows you're a contractor in town, and you have an economic incentive. But we're the planning board. Who's gonna vote against us? You know, a lick on me, because I underestimated his, you know, his commitment and what he was willing to do. I'm not making that mistake.
The difficulty there is, it's totally abstract to 98% of the people, what we're talking about. They can't, they can't visualize it, they don't understand why they would do it.
If there's this tension, if they sense this tension, then they vote against it.
Well, that's probably true as well. But mostly, it's because you can't really illustrate the ramifications. I mean, the people who live right there and have it happen to them.
You need pictures.
You need pictures, and I think it would have been helpful if, as a group, you know, like the library committee did, we stood up and said, here's why we're pushing this. like the library committee did, we stood up and said, here's why we're pushing this, because we didn't, I think actually, no, it was Danny did, but because he was there by himself, there was this perception that we were kind of apathetic about it, but at least from my perspective, it wasn't a question of, certainly not apathy, but a question of being kind of appropriate or low-key, or not trying to take up too much time, you know, any of those kinds of things.
Right. I really thought it was, it was a powerful case that was made, that Situate's regulations are not in line with our neighboring communities, you know, that we're far more generous and tolerant in that area than Cohasset, Norwell, Marshfield, whoever. And the same thing about the commercial tax base, as opposed to the residential loading.
Yeah, on that, on that front, I still think, even saying that, probably one or two pictures that show.
Yeah.
What an oversized accessory dwelling might look like.
Yep. You know, if we come in with the pictures that we, that had been here in front of the board and said, here's what happens.
Mm-hmm.
But, but again, I think it was just, I was reading a book not too long ago, where the, these people made this quote, they said, you know, first you need a system, and then you need a plan, and then you'll be effective. And I, I'm thinking that when it comes to making our proposals in town meeting, we need a system and a plan, so that, so that we don't make the same mistakes again, and if we make a mistake, we can identify it really fast what it was. Because, you know, I don't mean to sound like some sort of, you know, high school football coach, but I'm not going to town meeting to lose. And if we're gonna take the time, like we did, then we need, we need to go there and have, have our, our cause prevail, otherwise we're wasting our time. And the votes of the people that sent us here.
Your charge is to go sell marijuana.
Airborne.
I want the real marijuana, I don't want any of the synthetic stuff.
Oh, like the town of Quincy?
Hey, Eric, the, it passed at town meeting, now it goes out to the vote on December 14th.
Well, I think that, in general, we didn't do any kind of community work, anything we do is above and beyond.
Yeah.
I think another thing that's, you know, maybe obvious, but with a lot of zoning, there's, there's opposition, there's always somebody out there that is just scared, and doesn't want anything to change. And I think it's communicating with those people, drawing those people out, if it's other town officials, then maybe having some one-on-one offline communication with them, I mean, there's a lot of footwork.
Again, I'm going back to the tax, to the library issue, I remember what's-his-name Neil that used to stand up and, you know, argue against any increase in taxes whatsoever.
Right.
And, you know, and that's kind of the mindset that many of our residents come, come from, and here are these people, the library are saying, well, let's spend $12 million. The, the, the water line, $22 million, you know, and, and.
Long overdue.
Yeah, but it got done, and it was, it was a question, I remember seeing Neil, is it Neil Duck, Neil's, his PSAs on the, on the public television channel and channel, where he was talking about the water and showing the, the.
Oh, Al.
Al, I'm sorry, Al, yeah.
Yeah.
And all those kinds of things, and I'm thinking.
Or junk.